Yes, I am. Is this it?
Yeah, four.
Is everybody else gone?
Yes.
Sure is late, yeah.
I'd like to call to order, please, City Council Work Session, Monday, July 8th, this 2013, it's 4:30 PM thereafter, just about, right? Okay, we have two items on the work session tonight, and the regular meeting will be starting at 6:00 PM, and you know that if this goes over, you know that we will discontinue it and pick it up afterwards, because tonight we have two public hearings. So I've already called to order, and I need to announce that Councilman Osborne and Councilman Campbell will not be attending tonight's meeting, and Councilman Laura Tano will be a little late. So let's go to the agenda items. The first item is an update on the progress and new developments in the Goodyear Branch Library design, including conceptual signing plan for the Goodyear Municipal Complex. Regis Reed, project manager, and Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Directors, will present.
Mayor and Council, we are pleased to provide you with an update on the latest developments related to our new Goodyear library currently under design. Tonight we'll talk about an expansion, we'll introduce a new concept, a very innovative concept, we'll refer to as the Alexandria Network. You will receive a presentation regarding the Alexandria Network, then you'll hear from Regis Reed on some program design elements related to the project. As you are aware, our library is operated by Maricopa County Library District in accordance with an IGA. This relationship has been in place since our library first opened in 2007, and we could not be more pleased with this partnership. Library staff is with us this evening, and I want to highlight some of their accomplishments over the past year. Now, keep in mind that these accomplishments were made within the existing footprint of the 1,800 square feet.
What we have done with that 1,800 square feet.
It's amazing. Let me highlight just a few, if I may. Nearly 95,000 visits, 3,600 youth program participants, nearly 900 summer reading participants. I'm sure you will agree that Maricopa Library District has done an amazing job at providing library services for our residents within the very limited space. But the future of our new library is even brighter, and with tonight's announcement, it will now grow to 9,900 square feet. Among traditional spaces of children's, teens', and adult areas, the new library will now also feature an innovative space called Alexandria. The Alexandria Network is an ASU program, and I don't want to steal too much thunder from Sherri, who will speak regarding Alexandria, as well as an ASU representative. But I will tell you that this new concept is very innovative. In fact, it's the first of its kind for Maricopa County Library District system, and this is a collaborative effort with Goodyear, the Maricopa County Library System, and ASU. And so with that, we'll have Sherri come up and talk about Alexandria.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, one of the strategic issues that we had on our council's strategic initiatives this year was to create an incubator, and we were presented with a very unique opportunity in the last six months to become a partner with Arizona State University, Sky Song, Maricopa Library District, and the city of Goodyear. And what this does for us is it takes a very unique space in the Goodyear library, opening hopefully December of this year, fingers crossed everything goes well, to use the library as an incubator to create innovation and entrepreneurship. And essentially what this does is it sets aside about a thousand-square-foot area of the library as a resource area for entrepreneurs and entrepreneurs of all ages. So that's the neat part. It creates this synergy of people who are interested in entrepreneurship and innovation. And so with that, I just wanted to say that we are thrilled, because what this partnership brings is Maricopa Library District, for example, is buying the collection of works that go into the district library. Ours is staff time, so we'll have an economic development staff member three days a week having office hours in our innovation center, so that will be filling our pipeline of entrepreneurs and innovators. And then Sky Song and Tracy Lee is here this evening to talk about that project. She's the Venture Manager at Sky Song, and she will tell us about what they bring in terms of their rapid startup school and the programming that will go into the entrepreneur center as well. So, I just wanted to let you know that we have partnered with our team here in Goodyear, but also our friends at Arizona State University and Maricopa Library District to create a unique environment in the library that this space will also be open, the hours of the library, for use for all patrons, so anyone with an interest in entrepreneurship and innovation can be directed to this resource center and have opportunity to learn. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tracy at Sky Song.
Eddie, there we go.
Welcome, Tracy.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, it's really an honor to be here, so thank you so much for having me. I want to give you just a very quick background on the concept of the Alexandria Network. As we like to call it, it's democratizing entrepreneurship. We really believe that we want to open up to everyone in the community and understand the situation and the complications that libraries have currently faced in the age of digitization. We understand that we have people out there that have wonderful ideas, they're potential entrepreneurs, maybe small business owners, and they don't really have a part in the ecosystem where they can help develop their ideas and engage in their communities. Also, there's been minimal support for this structure. I'm an Arizona native, I understand that we have really needed to build our ecosystem to develop it more fully for a greater economic impact. So how do we take what resources we do have with limited budgets, be able to offer that support to these potential job creators? As we know, small businesses do create the most jobs. So we decided to utilize the library system with the Alexandria Network. Now, the library obviously has had to retool a little bit in recent years because of digitizing, and the modern library has had to redefine what they do within their communities. Also, libraries are still judged on circulation and foot traffic, so that presents an interesting dilemma for the libraries, on how do we retool and how do we make them relevant in our communities today? So libraries are also geographically dispersed, they're embedded in every community, and they're trusted, and that's a very important element to the Alexandria Network. But I want to take you back to the story of Alexandria, about 300 B.C., the first great library in Alexandria, Egypt. We found that it was actually a co-working spot, if you will, where people of their time came together and solved the issues of their time, philosophers, mathematicians, historians. They had environments where they had lecture halls that were similar to the current university systems, and they would gather there and discuss the issues of their time. They would engage within their communities, and they would solve the problems. The Alexandria Network is essentially taking the libraries back to their initial footprint and their initial design. The vision is to create the network, a co-working space within the library system where people can come together, they can collaborate, we can create other networks, so there's cross-collaboration across our communities. Through these networks, we're able to give people greater opportunities to be able to extend our reach on what we are able to provide, to give people an ability to take flight with their ideas, and provide a broad base of sharing resources. We understand with ASU, there's limits on what people, either geographically, of coming to us to get some of these resources or this training. We understand, too, that there may be barriers to entry, and we're trying to break some of those barriers to entry to allow people to have access to resources across our communities. We know that being an inventor is often a lonely task, some of them create in their garages, in the privacy of their own homes. We wanted to create an opportunity for people to come and share, we want people to network, reengage in our communities again. We've kind of lost a little bit of that over the years. We also want to have local library staff act as the champions. As you heard from Sherri, there's a lot of resources that can be devoted to this and a lot of expertise. Libraries are already fact finders, they're already resource guiders, so that's a wonderful partnership. We also want to help with the ASU Mentor Network. We have mentors all over the valley that really want to help within their communities. They don't always like coming, they like coming to Sky Song, I can't say they don't like coming to Sky Song, but they like to be able to be engaged within their own communities and strengthen their own community networks. One of the true important aspects of the Alexandria Network is that it's not a cookie-cutter type of operation, it's meant to really have the nuances of each community shine within their communities. We know that each community has different resources and different particulars that make those communities special. One of those things that Sherri had touched on was rapid startup school. Some of the programming that we'll be providing into the Alexandria Network is some of our programming that we give to our own startup companies, our student startups. We give pracc academic education, which means from practitioners that have been in industry that know what works and know how to succeed, the fundamentals of launching a new venture. Also, we do some lean launchpad methodology, which is for startups in particular, but we also provide a wide array of opportunities for rapid startup schools. So for an example, we do touch on a lot of veteran-owned business type of education, so that we can really tap into those communities and those particular groups that really need access to those resources that are very valuable for them to develop their ideas. So operations at a glance for the Alexandria Network, the library champions, they get special entrepreneurship and innovation training from us at ASU, or from our Entrepreneurship and Innovation Group. We have some monthly panel sessions that we can utilize online collaboration tools, video conferencing, so that we can interact in different locations. We provide the rapid startup school programming, and they're only accessible to those people that are in the library. You actually have to be in the space to be able to have this programming and access to the programming. We use it as a co-working light environment, and as they've mentioned before, that there are entrepreneur office hours, so people from economic development coming in to have office hours. We also have other mentors that come in and hold office hours to be able to help people get their ideas off the ground. Now, the one thing I love about Goodyear, it's been extraordinary working with this group of people in this city. It's been a true privilege and pleasure, and I believe that this is such a rich environment for this to take flight. You all are business-friendly, and I see that to be true. West Valley has some amazing growth right now. Goodyear is creating a terrific growth pattern in and of itself. The demo for entrepreneurship I'm particularly impressed with, 31- to 49-year-olds, I believe that's a third of your current demographic, and that's ripe for people that want to create their own businesses. Entrepreneurs, we think of them sometimes as the college kids that are kind of toying with some technology, but what we find is that over 40-years-old are the most successful entrepreneurs, because they bring the experiential factor with them. You have a strong median income as well in your community. Being a young community gives you a credible opportunity to embed the entrepreneurial ecosystem, which is incredibly important. In addition, the Goodyear advantage, as I like to call it, we just heard about the addition of 72 new F-35s, 144 total that are going to be coming to Luke Air Force Base. They are estimating that more than $260 million in construction is expected over the next decade. That is a great platform for entrepreneurs as well to meet demand. There's going to be a lot of demand, not only with the Air Force Base, but surrounding communities, to be able to add more resources and businesses. There can be a veteran focus, which is incredibly strong. Some of you may or may not know, but I am a current military reservist with the United States Navy. I do train out of Luke Air Force Base, and I just found out I got a cross-assigned unit in Hawaii, a new squadron I'll be working with. So the veteran focus in aerospace, military, and defense is particularly important to me. It creates a wonderful pipeline development. We are one of the largest in the country for military, defense, and aerospace industries, and it would create a wonderful pipeline to coincide with some of the wonderful developments and the growth over at Luke Air Force Base. So Alexandria Network would provide that connecting point for Goodyear entrepreneurs to develop the ecosystem with the tools, the resources, the wonderful forward-thinking people that exist within your community. And with that, I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Tracy. Comments, questions? Councilman Steph?
You are going to start with me.
Yes, I can say Bill, we're on the work session. Bill?
I don't have a tie-in, you can say anything you want. First, thank you very much for bringing this to us. It is something that we've talked about kind of very much on the periphery. How is this different than the Gangplank format that we have over in Avondale?
That's an excellent question. Well, and I get this a lot, but it can be viewed a couple of different ways. Gangplank serves a specific community. There are a lot of people that are intimidated by that. It's a great fit for people in the ecosystem, so in my view, everybody can play in that world, and it doesn't flank what they're doing, it doesn't flank what Alexandria is doing. It's for a different type of person. It's important to note that the library system has inclusivity to everybody, so even if it's that person that wants to just reconnect with their neighbor, or reconnect in their community and share ideas, they don't have to be a startup company. Some of them may not recognize themselves as entrepreneurs, may not call themselves entrepreneurs, but they want to solve a problem in their community. So that's the place. Now, if they get more developed as a small business, or an entrepreneur, or a startup company, it can create a nice feeder to places like Gangplank, and the more success that we have overall, then I think we can all stand greater economic impact.
Okay, so I'm going to interrupt here before I give it to Vice Mayor here. So are they, is this a step to Gangplank? Because my interpretation was that, in fact, the person or persons may develop something that they actually can take from Alexandria out to an investor, out to a market.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I got the idea that it was a step in that.
No, not necessarily. They may find that what they're doing may have applications there, but there's so many different players in the ecosystem, and it's trying to connect the dots with all the players in the ecosystem, and really develop that ecosystem so it's rich. The ideal thing, and we've had this question before, where, well, what if I'm using the co-working space, and I just start building, and I start growing, and it's just not suitable for my needs? It's like, great, then we want you out in the community and hiring people and having greater economic impact. This is, that's perfect. We want you to kind of outuse the resources there. So it's a wonderful starting point, it has many applications, and that's the wonderful thing that does separate it from Gangplank. Gangplank has a definite role within the community, and they've been doing a fantastic job, but this really provides a wider template and a broader application for everybody in the community.
And I think sometimes Gangplank can be intimidating, because it's really a culture.
Sure.
When you visit Gangplank, and you see what they're doing, they're doing extraordinary things, but there definitely is sort of a format or a type of people that are more attracted to that.
Absolutely.
So this kind of takes in all ages, all generations, I think. Joe?
Just for clarity, are these like small workstations within the 1,000-square-feet? They sign up, they come in, gather, is it all open, you know, for community? How does the mechanics of that work? If somebody wants to come in, say with five or six people, to discuss an idea, do they sign up at the front? Do they have a separate little cubicle, do they have a room? Just the mechanics of that.
Okay. Well, one very important thing to note is that we are not leasing space from the library. It is your space, so how you want to run it is absolutely up to you. We provide some feedback and guidelines. The important thing is what is going to work best in Goodyear, because I can tell you what's working now in Scottsdale, but that's a different community, and the important thing is to have things set up in Goodyear. So the idea is to have tables and chairs and places where people can connect and to talk to each other, have an area, maybe that there can be some training, but if you have demand for, let's say, a group that comes in and wants to meet that's five or six people, and let's say they want to have a meeting every Monday to get their week started off and bounce ideas off each other, you can certainly maybe set aside an area in that space for them to be able to connect and gather. So it's nothing really radical as far as how you have to alter what the library is, but it just gives people a place that they can sit and talk to each other. So you can set it up in many different ways, but whatever, and you could have a system where people sign up at the front, that could be a good tracking for metrics. There could be some follow-on meetings about how to establish those metrics and what to look for to help feed economic development and help, you know, kind of drive some of those things on success and be able to go after funding and that sort of thing. But to get feedback from your customers in the library space as an entry point, I think is a very important tool, because then you can be more proactive and be able to provide the resources that they're looking for.
The only reason why I ask is if you've got several discussions going on at the same time, you know, from a privacy or barrier standpoint, I would, and I guess I'd leave that up to staff on how they would design that, but I think you have to have some way that, some of it's remote, or places where people can go where they're not being distracted by multiple conversations going all in some open room. So that's the only reason why I asked, it was the mechanics piece.
Absolutely. Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, if I may. The space will include a separate meeting area, a small meeting area that can be reserved and private for those smaller group discussions within the space. So really, it's about providing the space and providing the resources within the space, and city staff will be there to help connect groups together of similar interests, and then Maricopa County will be there to serve as a reference for materials.
Cheryl in?
Well, I just wanted to say that I know you can't tell that I'm tap dancing, but I am tap dancing inside, because this has been a vision of mine for a very, very long time, because it is such a needed opportunity. As the challenges came to businesses, it became more and more apparent that while they're creative and a lot of good has come from that, there was a need for a place to gather, to bounce ideas, because when you're working, we all know that more people will generate a better product when you discuss, when you're playing off of other people's ideas. So I am so very excited, and I think one of the things that sets this apart from Gangplank, I don't see as a competition, I see it as a complement, because with the connection with ASU, you have serious resources that they wouldn't have in any other way. So I am tap dancing, even though you can't say, and I'm very, very, very excited.
Yes, Bill?
Okay. The ultimate question is the finance aspect of this? Are we going to get to that in a moment?
We will.
Okay. Then I'll wait till then.
I have a question, is that I really believe that we should have some metrics that should be measurable, because we always have to answer to the public.
Right.
And so, you know, some people might say, oh, what a great place, you're going to send a bunch of people in to talk and have coffee, and, you know, so it kind of gives, in a sense, if they're not educated in the field of what this has been doing at Sky Song and some of the other places around the state. So I think that's meaningful, that we'll have something that can be presented to us that we can report, and so we want to hear the progress of it all.
Absolutely. And I will tell you with the metrics, what we've worked out so far with Scottsdale being the first location that's up and running, one of the things that's been very important is that there are metrics that the library would like to know, but there's also metrics that economic development wants to know. So one of the things that we uncovered with our metric system, again, we'll have follow-on discussions about how to establish it properly for Goodyear and what you all are looking for with that, but we have already found through the metrics, keeping track of the metrics, that two LLCs have been formed in the city of Scottsdale as a direct result of the Alexandria Network. So those are the types of things then you can take back to the taxpayers and say, this works, this is what we're creating out of this. So those are the types of metrics that we want to look for, because it has economic impact, it has economic growth, and those are things people can get excited about. And those are things that ultimately, this is the whole underlying point of the Alexandria Network, is to create that and to be able to really have that build momentum within the community, and jobs, and to be able to create jobs within our communities.
Well, that's great, because you do need testimonials, I think, anything. Testimonials always works in selling anything, so that's great to hear, I appreciate that. Any other comments? Great presentation, we're just excited about it all, and it's a real coup for Goodyear. I don't know if the public realizes this, but would you like to tell us about the other cities that are not involved in this?
Sure. Sure. Well, I will say that we were...
Or any way you want to present it.
Sure. Well, the reason why we went with Scottsdale first is because we do have the public-private partnership with Scottsdale with Sky Song, so that would have, they're our backyard, so that would have been a little in poor form if we didn't work with them to begin with. But we are also working with Tempe for obvious reasons as well. We've been talking to the city of Mesa, we've been talking to Yuma, we've talked to, we've talked to the American Indian communities. As far as commitments yet, as you know, with city governments, that can kind of be lengthy, and depending on, there's some that are building new libraries, there are some that are restructuring their library systems. We ideally would like to have it in all communities, and I believe that we can support that in all communities. I'm constantly versing some of my fellow colleagues, because they aren't from Arizona, they haven't been here for very long, so they think, well, if you have one in Gilbert, people in Scottsdale are, you know, there's not any point to have one in Scottsdale, and it's like, you don't understand how far apart we are with this, really. So I believe that most communities we've already had initial contact with. One of the things, after my initial meeting with the city of Goodyear, I went back to my team and I said, we have to have them onboard. I am so excited about this city, I'm so excited about their enthusiasm and their passion and what they're doing as a community. So we're talking with many, it's just who's coming onboard, you know, for various reasons on, again, new developments, and some are staffing issues that they're trying to resolve. So, but yes, it's basically been Tempe, Mesa, Glendale, we've had some kind of discussions with you all, of course, Buckeye, Yuma, we want to go down to Pima County, but we're trying to be very tactful as we head down south.
Well, it makes sense, because people that want to be involved in this have some other job they have to support themselves with many times.
Absolutely.
So being in the area of where the businesses or their job is, makes it far more convenient in the success for it.
Oh, indeed.
So, again, thank you very, we're really pleased, thanks staff for getting on top of this, and we're looking forward to the results of, or the beginning of it, anyway.
Thank you. And just one final word, as an Arizona native, this project, as you were talking about tap dancing, you know, we can't see it, but that really warms my heart, too. Arizona is my home, it's a wonderful place, and it's incredible to be able to have a role in a project that we can help develop our wonderful state of Arizona.
Well, we appreciate Sky Song, because we know the successes, and I've been there a couple of times, as I told you, and have heard and seen great successes there, and so we look forward to having our own successes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council, it's been a pleasure.
Mayor and Council, we're extremely pleased as well to bring this forward. As you know, this ties directly into the city's vision that council set, and Goodyear will be known as an incubator for entrepreneurs, and we are turning those words into actions with this project, so we're very, very pleased and excited.
Great.
I'd also like to recognize Christine McMurty, who she said, she said we didn't have to, of course, but Christine actually was one of the main drivers of bringing this program forward, so I want to recognize her efforts, and I'll turn things over to Regis.
Of course, we've seen the excitement on her face, and we've been hearing her voice, so, all over the city hall, we know that this is something she's been looking forward to, so.
Mayor, members of councils?
It's your turn. Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here again before you about our exciting new library, and of course, this exciting new space we're adding to it. It did present some challenges for us, of course, and we've been moving very quickly. The month of June was very busy with our design team, of course, Dick Fritchie and Associates, and Maricopa County Library was engaged heavily, and we even reached out to friends of the library with this new programming, and all are completely onboard and rock and rolling with it. With that, I'd like to kind of show you how we rearranged things a little bit in our municipal complex here. In order to add the 700 to 1,000-square-feet, that was my task to this building, for the Alexandria space, the space just wasn't large enough for it to have fire and the library being right at 10,000-square-feet in this building. So what we've done is we relocated fire to Building A. We reduced their programming slightly to make it fit in there, to fit our budget, so we wouldn't increase their budget to do the build-out. I did review this with Chief Luizy and Chief Allman, and they were both very excited about it. One of the things they got excited about was the fact that it's a brand-new space, they're not, we're not putting them into a space that's somewhat been built out already, so where they can organize offices, break rooms, and their space to meet their needs, their circulation needs, and also the opportunity for them to expand in the future. When they moved into Building C, they were going to be in 5,000-square-feet, and that was it. This afforded them the opportunity to grow from 4,400-square-feet upon move-in to 67, almost 6,800-square-feet, which should take them some time out in the future. In this rendition you see here on the floor plan, the green space is library, the purple space is identified as Alexandria space, that's a little bit of a misnomer, that's our programming space, that 1,500-square-foot, we didn't lose any of that, and we've also lost no other programming in here, our children's space, adult space, all that stayed the same square footage, we just took a little more out of the building and gave it for the Alexandria space. In this building, it also leaves about 3,000-square-foot of essentially built-out space for city to lease or move into with other departments, things like this, and it truly is already built-out space, it's ready to move into with, I think, five offices, a break room, and a restroom.
Joe?
Could you just go back to that one there, Regis?
Yes.
You've got Alexandria in the purple, you're saying that's still part of the library? What's, what is the 99, I guess, 9,900-square-feet? Is it the green and the purple?
It's the green.
And the yellow, or is it just the green and the purple?
Yeah, Councilman, or Vice Mayor Pizzillo, yes, it's the, the green and the purple will come up to right at 9,900-square-feet when we're done with design. We're still in very early schematic design on this, but that's our plan, is be right in that 9,900 to 9,999 square feet.
And the yellow is future?
That's...
So that you could even expand it further if it's so needed, or other city services need in on that budget?
Absolutely. And again, as I say, that's already built-out space that we built out for Franklin Paris temporary, and it's a good space just to leave as is, we're designing it to leave that intact, with no emergency address or anything through it from the library space or the program space, so that it will be standalone on itself, and it is an opportunity for the library to grow into in the future if needed.
Okay. So what do you mean, it's their temporary space, and they're not in there now, correct?
That is correct.
So there are offices or cubicles there? That's all... So there are offices or cubicles there that's already set, but nobody's using them?
That is correct, they're empty offices, a break room, a bathroom, things like that.
So if you needed other offices, or somebody, you've already got it built in?
It's built out, it's just a matter of moving your cubicle furniture, office furniture into it, and that's it.
Did I hear you correctly, with all of this, we're still on budget, or will be on budget?
We'll get to that.
Okay.
No, we are.
I like that hedge that you said, we'll get to that, yes.
Well, he doesn't know if you're gonna like it or not.
Okay.
This is just the first go-around we had, working with Maricopa County Library District and our designer, and this is the latest plan they came up with, and everybody seems to be pretty much onboard with. You can see the Alexandria space, it's kind of hard to see, but it's, is just there, right behind the two desks that are the entry of the customer service desk, it's just to the north of that, I don't know if we can, don't have a pointer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, yes, and as you can see, that's completely wide open, that space is to the library, there's no wall off, you walk in the library, you walk into that space, and you're, all you've done is entered a new program space within the library, the Alexandria space. There's a little office, if you can see the conference table with a few chairs around it, that's actually the same as in the upper left-hand corner, is the teen area, we'll have a glassed office where you can always view and see into it, but it's programmable to have breakout space for if entrepreneurs get together and they get to collaborating, they can book this room to take it to the next level possibly, things like that. It's also available for the library to, for study space and things, that's where also. If you look just to the, below that, you'll see a real small office, it's about a 10 by 10 office at this time, and that's the office that's going to be utilized by city staff. When we're over there, we'll need a place that, right there, perfect, Nathan, need a place to also, when they're not there, to secure city product, supplies and whatnot, computers, things like that, so that when they go over, they can unlock the door, walk in, they're open for business, they don't have to carry anything over, so that's what that is. What we did essentially was, the Alexandria space that's identified there used to be the staff space for the Maricopa County Library, we slid that to the south, on the top, directly south, that's where we moved the staff to, and that started getting into the fire, where the fire department was going to be located, so that's where that space started getting into it. We also turned the multipurpose room, it used to run east-west, we turned it to run north-south, and it's still right off the children's area for the, no, just to south that, that right there, that's multipurpose room with storage room and bathrooms associated with it. So it really just a little shifting of space, and it designed out very, very easily, and everybody's onboard with what we're doing there. The children's area, we're not going to get too much involved in it, we're short on time, but the children's is, right this time, designed to be exactly like we planned on it from day one, that won't change at all. The same with the teen area, we won't affect those areas whatsoever, they'll be designed as original. Before I go to the next slide, on the library itself, do I have any questions? The next slide I'm going to take you into is the actual municipal signage we're doing for the Goodyear Municipal Complex.
Do you want Joe's question, or do you want to, are you doing a financial at the end?
The financial will be at the end.
Is that, is that fine with you, Joe, you're gonna make it through?
No, that's fine, I'll make it through.
More planned question, more or less.
Sherry, go ahead.
When we see the area that you said was built out, built out, are there actually walls there, so those are separate offices?
There is.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure about that. So if Alexandria, or the library, or somebody needing more space, that's all ready to go, is just move furniture in, so it'd be very easy to move them over to those offices?
If that's the programming that they would desire. Generally, we probably would not want office space for the library, they generally like an open space, they've already got their staff space, I suppose, as the library grew, they could move more staff into some of the offices, that's pretty much identified. If the library expanded in this, of course, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but I would suspect that we would have to redesign that space to make it more open and move some things around to do that. What it is right now is built out so that if, we ended up with a tenant possibly that needed some office space, they've got the ability with a bathroom, with a break room, to actually move into that on a temporary basis, or city staff, if we needed more office space for the city itself, there's 3,000 square foot, there's essentially built out with one, two, three, four, five, six offices, and a break room, and a good front entrance and a good back entrance, exit entrance.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, because one of the questions about Alexandria was, if they're working on, like, secret projects or something, it seems like this is kind of in the middle open area, so I was just wondering if-
From my understanding-
I'm planning for boom, that it's gonna be a takeoff.
Well, I just say, I guess what we're looking at, who makes those decisions, and at what point would you make that decision, so, to me, an empty room's an empty room, and if there's a need, we need to be filling it or not.
No, I just, because I want to know, is it connectable? I guess that's my question, is this connectable to the library, or does it take a lot of money to, is this something that can be easily built out to? I guess that's what I want to find out, because it's-
Yeah, and actually, it is very, very connectable. If you see the light shaded area to the right of the screen there, that's the space that's built out, that's, those are the existing offices and break rooms built out, and it'd be an easy connection to take it from the multipurpose type room on into that space, and it also does have a separate entrance, if it needed to be booked, if somebody actually wanted to do something with that, those possibilities are absolutely out there, that would be a policy decision for city to make in the future.
No, I just wanted to know how easy it was to get there without spending a lot of money.
It actually is very, very easy to do that, yes.
Joe?
Looking at that design, just as a follow-up, can you get to that built-out area through the library, or is it outside to get to that?
Right now, it's designed to be outside. The multipurpose is connected directly to the library, but there is still no connection for multipurpose into that space. Again, without knowing what the programming of that space is going to be, you know, during design, at this point, we haven't gone through the assessment of making that connection. If the desire is to be there, we can certainly do that through the design, but at this point, no.
Cheryl?
I just, could you refresh for me exactly what kind of activities in the multipurpose room, and how large is it?
The multipurpose room is 1,500 square feet, it's larger than our 117 at IOB, at our city hall now, it's a larger room than that. Essentially, it's going to be for programming for the library, for storytime, and some of the other programmings they offer that can be conducted outside, the same type of programming they're doing in 117 now, and also, it'll be used for community-type services, from what I understand, association meetings in the evenings, Boy Scouts of DB, it's a programmable space, and I believe it's going to be controlled and programmed by the Parks and Rec Department.
That's good news, we needed that for our citizens.
Yeah, that hasn't changed from day one when we started designing this.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. We were tasked with coming up with some desperately needed signage for the Goodyear Municipal Complex we have here, and this is just a footprint of the entire complex, way more detail here than I want to get into, I just want to let you know the progress we're making. Each of these little symbols, 1, 4A, 4B, 4C, designate a certain type of sign that we're looking to put on this. We've had three design meetings now with staff and our designer, and they've come up with some really great renderings, and we've gotten good feedback. This first one is our major marquee, that'll be located right here at the main entrance, coming off of Van Buren, it's where the existing sign is now, it says the Vinita Complex on it, we're expanding on that, enlarging it, it'll be these color palettes, it'll read Goodyear Municipal Complex and have the address on it.
I think it's great, because it's sort of in the design of our digital signs, our entry signs all over, I think it has that same feel.
That's exactly what, our design team went around, took pictures of current designs in there, and you can see, one of the things they did was capture one of our Goodyear signs.
Bill?
Regis, are we gonna be able to see this?
Absolutely, Councilmember-
When we're done?
Yes, we will be able to see this, I've been working with Mark Flynn, Public Works, and we're going to be doing some foliage trimming, to be able to see the signage around this complex.
You're not referring to the size, you're just referring to what's gonna go-
To the trees, because you can't see anything right now.
All right, okay.
And, Councilmember, that's also a big consideration we have when we start placing signs, looking at the existing trees, what we're gonna have to do to remove, trim back, do whatever we need to do to make sure that, again, we don't put a big picture sign-
Please don't say, please don't say "remove," we may have to look at adjusting the tree size, or something like that, you'll-
Adjust accordingly to where you see the sign.
Thank you, thank you.
This is basically a rendition of what we may look like with the building signage, this, of course, is the Justice Center here, and council chambers will be putting this type of signing up on the building. And throughout the complex, this is just some wayfinding signage, the one on the left with the address on it will be the monument sign, it'll be right off of 145th Avenue here, and it'll just tell all the different departments and businesses, because Franklin Pierce will be part of this, of course, in the complex. And as you enter the complex, and the second sign, the one in the middle, that'll give you a wayfinding on which way to go when you get to certain points of the complex. And of course, one on the far right, that just lets you know you've arrived, and that'll be out at the parking lot also, to let you know that you've finally arrived where you're gonna go. Give you a little timeline, this is on the library, we'll be completing the design this month, we'll be finalizing the construction contract in very, very early August, and August 19th, we'll be back before you with a construction contract to build out the library. We hope to begin construction in August or early, early September, and though our data slipped a little bit, I think with the aggressive move, kind of put us back a little bit, but with the aggression of everybody aboard with our JLC contract or anything, they feel very comfortable, we can still be substantially complete in December, having the library move in and have a January library opening. And they removed my slide, and I apologize, let me cover budget, I thought it was in here. Essentially, the library budget- Well, I was reminded about it twice, I thought I better cover it. The original budget of $1 million of library impact fees is intact, we are adding $100,000 to that, to help cover the additional square footage of the library, and of course, a big part of that is FFNE, along with the additional square footage comes with computers, furniture, tech bars, these conference tables and rooms, things like that, there's additional costs, and that is a not-to-exceed number, we anticipate that coming in between $80,000 and $100,000, the additional space, so all total will be in for about $1.1 million.
Can we, by chance, have this put on, the budget online for the information, do we have it at that, or? No, oh, it is, it is, okay.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, one of the things, too, is the budget originally for this was $1 million that we were using development impact fees for, so that's a funding source, so this is not a new funding source. The only thing that's really changing is incorporation of Alexandria, and then the other is, is we moved the fire administration building over to make sure that we're still within those dollars as well, so it's something that we continue to look at, refine, these are ranges that we have in front of you right now, working hard to stay within budget, so that is the goal.
Can we just remind the public, though, that we, if we didn't use these impact fees, they're going to go away, we have a certain timeframe which they have to be used, and that's why this, we took this opportunity when it came before us, because now's the time to do it, if we're gonna do it.
Correct, Mayor, the development impact fees, those that have been collected have to be used, or you have to return those, which is really a challenge, because there are, you know, a lot of sources that actually paid those impact fees. So, funding source has not changed, it's, as we put this into the budget, nothing has really changed here, other than trying to work hard to keep this within budget, and adding the Alexandria portion of it as well.
But on the other end, the impact fees that they were required to pay are being used to what they paid it for, so.
Correct, that was a funding, that, the library impact fees were specific to having to expend those on a library.
Just want them to know, we're not borrowing from other places, we're actually using it. Bill?
Okay, so, assuming the worst-case scenario, we don't keep it within that $1 million, and we go to the $1.1, where's the $1.1 coming from?
Mayor and Councilmember Stip, as Regis pointed out, we'll be working, you know, the first thing we need to make sure we understand tonight is their support for including Alexandria in this project, as, so we want to make sure, and while council doesn't vote on that tonight, we want to get that direction to keep working toward that. Then the other part of it is, is we'll keep looking at the numbers, we are looking at an estimated $1.1 million, we're working closely with the finance department, today we can't tell you unequivocally that we're there, but we will be by the time we come back to council in August, so you will see this again.
Okay.
Joe?
When all is said and done, and all the improvements, what percent of our entire complex will be occupied? What will our, I guess vacancy rate either way, I mean, what will be unoccupied? Any idea?
I wouldn't have that number in front of me, Councilor, Vice Mayor Prizzillo, out of the-
You don't have to guess, the only reason why I ask is, you know, when we bought this building, we were thinking, well, we have so many years before we fill it up, and I'm just curious at this point, you know, I'm glad that we're expanding the library, don't get me wrong, I think that's the one thing, we spent millions on other things, this is one thing I really want to see, but I would really like to know, from a percentage, how close we are to that, you know, we had 80%, 85%, 70%, you know, and if you can get that to me, I'd just appreciate it, you don't have to guess at it now.
Absolutely, we'll get that back to you, Vice Mayor, I will say that out of the space, when we're done with this, we will only have 3,000 square feet in Building C and 2,300 square feet in Building A that's not built out.
Can you give me a percentage?
I would do that, yes.
Good, thank you. Any, are we finished with that presentation, any more questions? All done? Thank you very much, I think we're all very excited in both presentations of our future, so, appreciate it. Did you have one more thing?
Six o'clock.
That's in a regular meeting.
The library staff?
Yeah, I know, we really do. Okay, of course, we're gonna, where are we now? The second item tonight is a presentation on the overview of the fire department's action plan, which addresses critical findings and recommendations identified in the management assessment. Paul Luizzi, interim fire chief, will present, Paul?
Evening, Mayor and Council, all right tonight? Okay, what I'd like to do tonight, a little different, is as we get through some major sections, kind of stop and allow you guys to ask some questions, supposed to-
Just give us a hint on that.
Yeah, I will, thank you. Tonight, we're here to review the fire department audit and subsequent plan that I, along with my team, have developed and overseeing the implementation. Citygate was hired by the city in December 2012, they conducted extensive interviews, data mining, and review of over 425 city documents, records and analysis of the fire department. They then issued a report to the city manager in April 2013, within that report, they had 59 critical and key findings, 31 of them had recommendations. As noted in the audit, the men and the women of the Goodyear Fire Department provide exceptional emergency services and customer service. Many of the issues that were addressed were internal management issues. We received very high remarks for EMS, for training, and for emergency management. My primary focus going into developing the plan was building that integrated team, department functioning as one team, consistent message and accountability, rebuilding of the fire prevention division, and implementation of best practices for internal operations. Once I got the audit, I assembled the critical action team on April 15th, I had a critical action plan implemented on April 22nd, reorganization occurred on the same day, and then we established a timeline with ownership and accountability. The plan is broken down into four sections, and as you can see, fire prevention was a critical finding, organization, climate was a critical finding, deployment was a critical finding, and then also, we had recommendations. And what I'll do with, throughout the presentation, is stop after each of these major critical findings to allow for questions. New process in fire, new process in fire prevention. We reorganized fire prevention in their direct report to the fire chief now, we also have administrative support there as well, which they did not have before. Brought in a temporary employee to assist with change and program coordination, Steve Morrow comes to us from Sun City Fire Department, he had retired after over 20 years of experience, many of those in fire prevention and building those programs, he was a fire marshal for Sun City, he's actually also a Goodyear resident. Some of his objectives that I gave to him were to create a master plan for fire prevention, which include the mission and the vision, and also the internal business process. Within that internal business process, we had address verification of all of our business occupancies within the city, confirmation and then an entry of those occupancies into our database. This is important to begin to establish our baselines as we begin to move the division forward, and having a real good data set. We also worked a lot on time management study in fire prevention, this will allow us to get a better understanding of the time it takes to perform inspections in low, medium, and high-risk occupancies. We're also starting to use two computer tablets to begin entering data remotely in the field, to provide for efficiencies. And with that data will be used in from fire prevention, we're going to be establishing units per day for the inspectors, similar to what building safety does, and also working on SOPs to establish best practice for fire prevention. on SOPs to establish best practice for fire prevention. Lastly, continuing to build a more consistent, efficient approach to our day-to-day operations. Mayor, what I've asked them to do is provide more customer service, be more efficient, education, and more enforcement. The audit also revealed that we need more consistent fire investigation availability. I set a goal of two to three fire investigator fours per shift. Now, a fire investigator four is the highest certified within the fire investigation certification process. This allows them to testify in court. Today, we have two fire investigator fours that are on call 24/7 for investigation call-out. This gives us the coverage that we need right away to cover. Also, one of our recently hired firefighters is also investigator four, and after he finishes his probation time, he'll be able to do call-out. We have two others that have completed their fire investigator two training and working on getting them additionally trained. We also have four others that have interest in it, and we'll be sending them to the National Fire Academy. However, the sequestration has slowed that process down right now for us. We're also working with legal and police to update our policies and procedures, and we've worked closely with the police department and an internal task force that will have two detectives assigned to our arson investigation team. This provides for more current resources and correct resources for our fire investigations. What I'll do is I'll stop here to answer any questions you may have so far.
Joe?
Hi, Chief. Question. Do you, I understand you've got to bring some people up to speed, certifications, get your levels. Is there enough money in the training budget to meet those goals?
We're working the city management office right now to identify some of those needs. What we did actually have is a fire investigative refresher program that we were able to do for our staff with the current budget. But I work very closely with Winette Reed on a lot of our needs right now, so.
Yeah, just a comment, you know, again, it sounds like a broken record, the best and the brightest, but if we're going to have the best and brightest, we've got to make sure we got them trained correctly as well, so.
Absolutely.
That's why I want to make sure you have those resources and able to do that job.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Oops, sorry. Operational consistency. One of the big keys within the audit was the operational consistency. So what we did right away is we changed the organizational chart, and I'll show you that in the next slide. Consistency, accountability, and trust was very important. So what I did was I met with the labor management team right away to discuss the consistency issues, and then work through those issues as a group. We, out of that meeting, we established one unifying message and then one set of expectations. I was also able to work with the city manager and point, Tom Cole, who's the deputy fire chief from the city of Glendale Fire Department, to come over and assist us in the interim. He's over operations, he comes to us with over 19 years of experience, many of those as an assistant chief over operations for the city of Glendale. And I have stressed to the department, we needed to be forward-focused, not worry about the past, but begin to kind of worry about what the future is. Here's our org chart as we see it now within the department. Under the professional standard support services is Mike Ullman, under operations is Tom Cole, and under that, he has medical services, training, and also emergency services, which is the crews that respond to the calls. Fire prevention, as I said, is a direct report to me now, and then emergency management is still overseen by Othel Newbill. Operational consistency, the battalion chiefs and the labor groups are working together in a much smaller group, so they can quickly, more quickly address issues that come up with any concerns, and they're report back to the senior management with any of those issues. They're also working very closely on the action plan. PIO training, we needed more depth for PIOs in the field, so we had a class in May that established one to two PIOs for each shift, so that we can respond to media's requests on a more regular basis, more timely basis. So Chief Braden helped us out with that program, as well as Lani Triplet as well, she was very instrumental helping us with that. Developing partnership with ATHS to use video conferencing in all the stations. This will allow the battalion chiefs and the captains to meet on a more regular basis through teleconferencing.
That's great, that's good.
And this will allow them to kind of address any inconsistency issues, go over any training issues, to go over any policy changes that may have happened. Now, telestaff is something that council had given us in the last fiscal year as a supplement, and at this point, we are 90% complete. Telestaff allows the department to automate their daily staffing electronically. With 31 staffing roles, we're able to ensure consistency in our staffing practice. This obviously promotes confidence and transparency with all the employees. One of the things I'm really excited about is the captain reset training, which is going to occur in August. Essentially, we're going to bring all of our captains in for 16 hours of training and get them back to square one. Within that training, we'll go over a view of policies and procedures, how to work with the media, review of documents and computer entries that they're responsible for, establishing consistent operations, working with telestaff, injury reporting, in-service company inspections, and also coaching and counseling of employees, among some of the other things that we're doing. So we're really excited about getting that done for them. And then lastly, on that slide, is the employee investigation training. This allows for a more consistent approach in our discipline and employee investigations within our department. We're working with legal and PD on that, on that training as well. So I'll stop here for any questions on the operations.
Questions? No, I think you're fine.
Communication strategies. Right away, I began to meet weekly and monthly with the deputy chiefs, battalion chiefs, the admin support staff, to kind of talk about the plan and how we're going to move that forward. I also held the captains' meetings, we brought all of the captains in to talk to them about the action plan, but also to keep them forward-focused on what we need to concentrate on. And also, I started to institute the word pride, which is personal responsibility in delivering excellence. Each of them have a responsibility as well as I do in delivering the best customer service that we can. Also, we started the chiefs forum, which allows for us to talk to all the department members on a monthly basis, talk about one particular issue, and then also open some time for questions and answers. So it allows for a more consistent message out to the crews. And then lastly, communications in the stations, making sure that all of our chief officers are getting out to the stations as much as they can, to kind of be seeing the other crews and also talk and answer any questions from them. Employee recognition. Mayor, I realize that it's important to build a team through employee recognition. One of the things that we've had within the department that's a nice tradition is Family Night. That happened on May 9th, 2013, and welcomed the new, four new firefighters that we had added to the department and their families to the city of Goodyear. I will note, it was one of the largest turnouts that I've seen in the last six years for Family Night. We've also held badge pinning, we've had two of those in the last few months. And I've also initiated therapeutic Thursdays, which is a once-a-month basis that we allow everybody to get together for lunch, talk about families, or just really enjoy each other's company. What I'm seeing is a more engaged workforce and much more collaborative approach. We have a couple pictures here from Family Night and from our badge pinning, our handsome new firefighters there. Accreditation was brought up in the report as well, Mayor. Accreditation by way of definition is a comprehensive self-assessment and evaluation model that enables organizations to examine past, current, and future service levels. It allows us to do that gap analysis, and also to provide for best practice, accountability, transparency, efficiencies, and evaluating ourselves on a yearly basis, but then also every five years by our peers that come in to evaluate us. Essentially, we're looking for our internal performance to improve and compare them to the industry best practices. This process leads to an improved service delivery. And Mayor, I'll note that there are less than 200 fire departments in the world that are accredited. So we know we have a long way to go for this process, but this is something that we're beginning with the end in mind. I'll stop for any questions here.
No questions.
Joe?
Chief, on accreditation.
Yes, sir.
As we, you know, we're a very large, spread-out city, and as we continue, which I hope we do more infill, which I think will help you guys as well, but as we spread out, how does that impact the accreditation if your response time starts dwindling? Because obviously, money's an issue as far as building fire stations and, you know, operating minimum as well. How does that impact the accreditation itself, the response time as we really start to spread the city out?
It will certainly impact the accreditation as we go through that, but it also provides us to, the opportunity to look at that and see that as an opportunity for us to work with city council and city manager's office to improve those areas. So it's a self, you know, self-evaluation, but it's also our peers coming in and saying, hey, here's an issue that you guys can begin to work on through, and as long as you're starting to show progress, and that, I think that's looked upon pretty highly by the accreditation team.
Just one of my concerns, and I've shared it with the mayor, as we grow, you know, I would prefer to see as much infill as we can, only because we've got stations that can service it, whether than, when you start to get the, it was interesting, when I, when my master's degree, one of my, one of my studies was on stats, is our response time, and it was not very pretty, some of the response times, you could have saved the gasoline because they weren't good if you had got there past the five, you know, five minutes, so.
Right.
So it's just in the back of my mind on that, how we kind of move forward, you know, as we, as we develop as well.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Well, I think it's going to take more than that, I think it's going to take a partnership with the business community, because realism is going to set in very soon, that there is no more fees for these services, and we're going to have to, the possibility, and I know this has not always been looked at well, partnering with another city and a fire department. There are a lot of things that may happen in the future on the borderline of Goodyear. I don't know when we're going to see it, but it's a fact of life that that's going to happen unless the process changes. So we have a lot ahead of us to be creative.
Yes.
But I love the steps you're taking, so, yes, Sherry?
Yeah, I will echo what the mayor just said, I love the steps you've taken, you can see by everyone here who's showing up for your presentation, I think that says a lot, because looking from the outside as the public, we never saw, you know, great customer service was always there, but I think you've done the great steps to bring that in an internal customer service. And when we look at the accreditation, do you have to start keeping the stats and the statistics from kind of like now?
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have anything to go back.
No, that's actually, I mean, I got my next slide, I'll go into that. No, that's fine, no, not a problem.
Bill?
Mayor, Chief, on the accreditation, are you saying that you're going to be starting that process?
We're, right now at this point, what we're doing is trying to conduct a gap analysis, is how far apart are we from the current standard and the current edition of the accreditation? We recognize we have a lot of other work to do first, but what I want to do is as we begin to rebuild and reassemble things, kind of build that with the end in mind, so accreditation is the end of the game, end of the road for us. So as we start to rewrite policies, or we're going through our, for instance, our policy rewrite, I want to go back to a more traditional format where we're reviewing certain policies every year, two years, every three years. That falls right into the accreditation model. So if we can start to build that and frame that now, it's going to be much easier once we get into accreditation. We realize we're not there yet.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you.
No, just...
Oh, Bill, I mean, Joe?
No, I just want to piggyback what Sherry said, I think it says a lot for the turnout that's sitting out there, and we really appreciate them, and obviously, there's an interest in this, because you've got a lot of people out there, and a lot of them are working that can't be here because they're out there, you know, working the shift, so, appreciate the turnout of the guys out there.
Well, it certainly shows they're supporting you, so that's a, that's a good tell right there.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate them, too. Standardization of data. As noted in the audit, we don't have that consistent information regarding our response times. The accreditation process will help us define our metrics. So what I'd like to do is begin to move us to this accreditation concept, which is new for us. So it's the call processing, which essentially is the 911 call processing from time of call receipt to dispatch, plus the turnout time, which is the amount of time that we allow for them to get on the apparatus, fully dressed out for certain calls, and buckled and ready to go, to the travel time, which you've always heard as the response time. That would equal the total response time. Now, in the travel time, we're going to introduce a new concept, it's called the brake-to-brake concept. Essentially, when the vehicle is ready to respond, the driver of the vehicle releases the emergency brake, and that's when they would note as their time responding to the call. Until they get to the call and the driver of the vehicle sets the emergency brake, that would be the endpoint of their travel time or their response time. This will allow us to get much more accurate travel times and response times, and also to standardize our data sets for us. And again, this is something we'll go over very heavily with them during the captain reset training.
Just a question.
Joe?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, as part of the study on the report, part of the problem, if I understand correctly, was the ability to capture some of this data. Is that still there, or some of the, are we getting better at tracking this data for you?
We will get better at it. We need to standardize our data sets, and again, a lot of that happens through training to make sure that we're capturing the accurate data sets. So that's something that we're going to really focus on in August training.
Okay.
I know in the report, there was some concern about the automatic aid, and just by way of review, this is a response model that's governed through an IGA, that provides seamless and effective interoperability in services to our citizens. Costs are shared among all agencies, saving over millions of dollars annually. This also reduces response times by sending the closest available unit to the emergency. So essentially, no jurisdictional boundaries, closest unit responds, prove safety for all of our firefighters. That's kind of some of the key points there for automatic aid. There were some leave issues that were also identified within the report. It's difficult for our employees to get, to use their vacation time, so I created a directive that will pilot up to three employees off per shift. After six months, we'll evaluate how this is, how this is going.
Sherry?
I guess what hits me in the city manager, or you, Chief, can, if we have trouble letting people off to take vacation, which is important, do we have enough people? And I guess that's the question that always keeps coming back to me, if people can't even take time off, do we have enough people to cover?
Yeah, we're certainly evaluating that. We have been working on a model that allowed for a certain percentage of people off, for that two persons off per shift. And as we grew, we never really changed it. We didn't grow enough to kind of get to that three, but we're going to pilot and see what the impact is to the budget. And so in January, we really want to look at this and see what the impact is, and then work with the city manager and deputy city manager to kind of see what the impact is, maybe come up with some solutions for that, so. Also, within the recommendations of adoption of our performance measures, and as you know, performance measures has been moved forward by city council, so this does include fire department metrics, so something we'll be measuring. Also, overtime usage, we're working with the city manager's office over the next few months to start on an overtime plan. Telestaff will also help us identify the data usage for our overtime, and also, we're using new overtime codes. That's being utilized effective July 1st, so that should give us some, some better data.
I just want to inject something on that overtime, is that I know there's a lot of citizens' demand, other than a fire, on our department, and many of it occurs in off-hours and causes overtime. So some of this responsibility is on our shoulders, but as well as the public and their requests. So I think that we have to be careful and monitor that, in making sure that it is essential that we have, that they have that coverage for whatever they've asked for, or have there been other solutions, so that does concern me.
And Mayor, I think part of what you're referring to is special event coverage as well, yes?
Thank you for clarifying, yeah.
We are working with the city manager's office on that. Training policies is also a recommendation that needed to be addressed. We are now having the training division oversee a more minimum, more frequent minimum company standards training for our folks, and essentially, that's the training that they do on a month-to-month basis. Public education and a supplemental request, city council provided us part-time education specialists, which will allow us to hit more venues with our public education. That's very important to us. Also, there was records management system issues that were concerned within the report. The fire department does have a policy that was recently updated. We've been tracking the performance measure on this internally for ourselves, to make sure that we are addressing those issues when they come up, and providing training and accountability through the C A entry when it becomes apparent to us. Also, promotional requirements, we have worked with our labor management group to ensure consistency with the requirements for promotion. And we're also working on a succession plan to ensure proper cross-training for our battalion chiefs and for our deputy fire chiefs. A lot of this will be addressed in our captain's reset training. Okay, to date, we have addressed all the critical findings. We prioritize those recommendations, everyone is working hard and is forward-focused. The priority is remaking of the fire prevention, and as I said before, we've been beginning with the end in mind. While we have found that there are many areas that need improvement, what hasn't changed is our response to emergencies and saving lives and property. Those were noted in the audit as second to none. I'm proud of our excellent service to the community in all phases of emergency response. What we, we have work to do, and will continue to work as a team to address the communication inconsistencies, and continue to build a trusting culture. While we make those changes... While we make those changes, I know that the men and women in the Goodyear Fire Department remain high-qualified, dedicated, and passionate about their jobs. While it changes can sometimes be unpleasant, it is helpful to make sure we never stop improving. There is nothing in the assessment that I believe cannot be accomplished by, as the department takes steps forward. The history that was built by the fire department is important to remember and hold in a special place. Today, we are forward-focused and excited about the challenge poised by the assessment as we continue to serve our community. By focusing forward and taking personal responsibility in delivering excellence, there is nothing that we cannot achieve as a department. So I'll, for any questions?
Council questions, comments? Bill?
I'll save my comments to the end. And they'll be brief. You know, I think of anybody sitting on this side of the table, obviously, my knowledge and whatnot with the organization. So it's very encouraging to see all the, the steps that have been taken, the team, teamwork coming together to move these problems forward. I certainly commend you and everybody, you know, on the, on the department, you know, everyone here, everyone not here tonight. There's a lot of work, a lot of work to be done.
Yeah.
Fifty, 59.
Nine, yeah.
Critical findings, that's a lot of work.
Yeah.
And, and I know it's not all going to be fixed in six months. I think you're going to try.
[laughing]
But over time, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna take some time, so. I know I asked for an update. I appreciate seeing it in good detail, and, you know, keep working hard and doing a good job.
Thank you.
Sherri? I already said a lot of my comments. I want to thank you for all your hard work, and, I mean, just look at the dates you started that. You got that within like a week, you're getting on this, and I appreciate that. I think it's really important for the public to know that although there's 59 critical findings, that as a pub, member of the public, the service was always A-plus. I think we have to keep stressing that, that the people in the field have always done a great job, and we appreciate that. And with everything that's going on, I was up in Prescott this weekend, we looked for you guys. I didn't see y'all, but we saw a lot of fire departments, and people were literally coming up to people in grocery stores from DeSedona and thanking them. So I think we don't say thank you until there's a problem. So I want to say thank you to you and everyone here for everything that you do every day, and a lot of people don't realize what y'all do. And I want you to make us a promise that if you need something, you let us know. You just, we don't want to hear everything's okay. We want to help you, and we want to make you all succeed, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Joe?
Just to echo, you know, Bill and Sherri's comments, and I appreciate you all coming out, and again, appreciate all the work you're doing, and again, to mention what she said, your service is second to none, and I know the dedication of the force that's out there, you guys are second to none of anybody out there, so. I appreciate the effort, I appreciate the work, Chief, and I appreciate the team building and all you're putting in, and this is the most of your fire crew of any time I've seen at any meetings, which in my mind tells me that they're all trying to work to get this thing done, so. Again, guys, I appreciate the work. Ladies, I appreciate the work. I appreciate everything you do for the city, and I know also that you are second to none out there, so, thank you.
Cheryl Lynn?
I just wanted to say, I think you and your staff to have a report this quickly after the critical findings were, were indicated is an absolutely phenomenal task for anyone who has looked at this kind of thing to turn the direction you have. But it, I know, Paul, you are a phenomenal leader, but it didn't happen alone.
No.
And kudos to all.
Yeah, they're a phenomenal team.
Well, as Mayor, I just want to echo everything that was said around this table. I take great pride in, in the movement that you and the department have made. You put your head back, your shoulders back, and you said, we're going to take care of this. You didn't fight it, you just accepted it, and you, you went, each section that you can absolutely see you have addressed, and it sounds to me like you have the fortitude, and I think you have the support behind you to make these changes. I will say from my perspective, because I come from an area that the fire department goes to a lot, and I have never heard a bad report. I mean, when they are on site, they're, they're angels, so we realize that. It's the behind-the-scenes things that were going on that had to be taken care of, and a lot of it is because of our growth. We grew so rapidly that you're just clawing to keep up with it all. But now's the time to reconstruct it all and make it right, so thank you very much, and thank you to all the men and women of the department that are, are going to be on this team, and it sounds like they are, that everybody is signed on for this, so, thank you.
Thank you.
City manager, anything? Well, what we're gonna, this is, yes?
Well, you, yes, usually I don't get an opportunity at work session, but I'll take it.
I'm going to give it to you.
Congratulations. Great presentation, Paul, and then also, obviously, the support of, as it's been said, that look at the support behind you, so appreciate the efforts very much. Thank you. I have no other information for council.
Thank you. With that, we're going to adjourn this, and we'll start the regular meeting at 6 o'clock. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.